Thanks so much. This evening, we have a consent agenda for the minutes of our September twenty fifth, twenty twenty five meeting, as well as I know the bill of payroll. Everybody have a chance to read the minutes. Very detailed also. Their motion to accept the consent consent agenda.
So moved.
Made by Sean.
A second.
Second and five. Give it to Beal. All those favored here by saying aye.
Aye.
Perfect. It's our first opportunity for interested citizens. If there's anyone with us this evening that would like to speak before the school committee, or anyone on Zoom, be a second opportunity towards the back half of the meeting.
We've won.
We have won. Alex, do you wanna let procedurally, do you wanna let them in and ask them to introduce themselves?
Annalise, can you hear us?
Yes, can you hear me?
Not quite. Just give it one sec. Want to try again?
Yeah, can you hear me?
A little better.
Is that is that better?
Yes, it's not you. We're waiting for volume to come up in the room. So what you're doing is fine.
Okay, good. All right, I'm Annalise Tabor, two ninety one Goldsmith Street, Littleton. I am the chair of the Yes For Littleton Committee, ballot question committee in support of Shaker Lane School. Sorry, a lot of words. So I had, I just wanted to plug the upcoming Shaker Lane events, and then I had a clarifying question. So just so the public is aware, we have our last Yes For Littleton Community Meeting on October fourteenth from seven to eight P M. in the Ruben Hall Library Murray Room. And so we're going to be talking about town meeting strategy at that meeting. I can't believe it's our last one already. And then on the eighteenth, which is a Saturday, that is the final Shaker Lane Community Forum, which is hosted by the Shaker Lane Building Committee, and that is at the Center on Shattuck, and that's at four P M. And then the final Shaker Lane Tour and Info Session is a week before in town meeting. So that's on Tuesday, October twenty first at six thirty. And that's also hosted by the Shaker Lane Building Committee. And then Yes For Littleton will be at Trunk or Treat, which is on the twenty fifth, which is a Saturday, at six P M. in the Alumni Field Parking Lot. And then, of course, we have Town Meeting, which is Tuesday, October twenty eighth at seven P M. at the Littleton Middle School Gymnasium and Cafeteria with free childcare for ages three and up and family-friendly voting in the cafeteria. And then E H S is organizing transportation to Town Meeting. So if you are interested in taking advantage of that, please call Dispatch. And then we have our Town Vote, which is November first, which is a Saturday, and that is eight A M. to eight P M. at the middle school. I think that's all of it. Okay, and then my clarifying question, and you know, feel free to to answer this however, whenever. So we wanted to to know, so if the vote does not pass and we do end up with the entire student body, well, basically, and and we end up with the twenty two modulators, as as in the no plan. I just wanted to clarify who will actually be in those modulators and where will they be? Because that is a lot of modulators, and I know we were speaking before about how putting the pre-K to two population in modulators is not really feasible due to, you know, their developmental stage. So just wanted to put that question out there. Thank you guys so much for all that you are doing for this Shaker Lane project. We are very close to the end. So thank you all.
Great. Thanks. Thanks, Annalise. Nice summary.
Thank you.
Kelly, I don't know if you wanna answer that, but you know, I'll I'll say there there hasn't been, we haven't formulated a plan in the event that it goes no. So it's not like it fails, and then next school year, we have a plan to bring twenty two modulators in, and we're gonna tear Shaker Lane apart. We would address that situation as it arises, and probably wouldn't. We probably wouldn't voluntarily incur that expense. We would wait until we're forced to do the code upgrade by tripping the trigger report and then assess what our situation is at that point in time. But there would be, there is the reality is factual that that building will need significant upgrades at some point in time, and it could be the very near future. So to answer your question specifically, the twenty two modulators is an assessment of displacing that amount of students in temporary classrooms. And the point's been brought up before that it might not be the the pre-K to two population that we end up displacing, because that might be a harder student body to move through modulators and access other amenities and things like that. So we would have to go back to the drawing board as an as an entire district to try to figure out the best way to perform a code upgrade on that building and then be woefully disappointed with the amount of money that we pumped into that thing and the fact that it's still undersized. So anything to add?
Yeah, thank you, Justin. There is no definitive plan, and I think if if the new school didn't pass, first thing we would probably do is try to identify the systems that are more most likely to fail and get a cost on them. And then that would probably determine further direction after we have that. Ideally, if we could take care of a couple of systems that we were concerned about, and we didn't hit this two point seven three million dollars, then there would be a a greater chance of not having to bring twenty two portables in. We could bring some portables in at the old Shaker Lane School. So we want to be cautious. We we want to make sure we do due diligence before we do anything. So it would, it's far too premature to come up with a plan at this point in time. One other thing, Annalise, you didn't know this, but I was informed today that the center isn't available on October eighteen. Though the forum will be held at the middle school on that date.
Perfect. Thank you for the clarification. It will make sure that she gets that for her.
Sure.
All right. Any other interested citizens? Hearing none, seeing none. All right, well, that portion of the meeting will move through our recognition reports. Who we have with us this evening. Have you? Will provide the student representative report. Welcome.
Good evening, everyone. I have the school reports. Let's start with Shaker Lane. Shaker Lane had their book fair evening last night along with their second annual masked reader. Staff dressed up in costumes and read a story with a voice changer where students guessed who the reader was. Thank you to all the families for attending this book fair and to the staff who've supported this event. Also, Shaker Lane's Fun Run will take place next Friday. The school's goal was to raise twenty five thousand, and they surpassed this by raising thirty one thousand dollars, and there's still time to donate to the Fun Run. Moving on to Russell Street. Russell Street had a successful safety drill on September twenty nine. Thank you to S R O, Jones, and Wosinski, as well as other members of the police and fire departments for their assistance. The fair has begun. Students are getting the hang of assembling their instruments and making their first musical tones. Full band rehearsals will begin next week. Also, fifth graders will be heading on a walking field trip next week to the old burning grounds. Next is the middle school. L M S had its first sixth grade kids' night out on Friday, and it was beginning. Thank you to all of the P T A for hosting. Also, L M S will have a Halloween dance for seventh and eighth graders on Friday, October twenty fourth, and the cost is five dollars at the door. The high school, from October tenth to seventeenth, there will be spirit week activities. And on October sixth, the event will take place at six P M. Then the homecoming football game is that week at seven P M. On October eighteenth, the morning will start off with the P S A T for the class of twenty twenty seven and twenty twenty eight at eight A M. And in the evening, it will be followed by the homecoming dance at six P M. Thank you so much.
You. Thanks so much. Turning over to Kelly Clancy, who will provide a report on L H S and L M S being recognized schools of recognition.
Thank you. So very pleased to be able to announce that Welton Middle School, Welton High School were designated as schools of recognition. What does that mean? It has something to do with our accountability status, which all schools and districts are rated on in a year. Is in relation to M C A S scores. We had a strong improvement at those two schools, which is all for one of the few schools that were recognized when you can consider the total number of schools of Massachusetts. It's a pretty proud moment. And they also take a look at overall achievements at the O A N as well. So congratulations to high school and middle school. Job well done.
Well said. Yes, okay. All right, we've got a number of new business items before us this evening, the first of which invited Dave McManus, the Welton Youth Baseball and Softball, to the podium, who will present an overview of an anticipated hope so, lighting system donation for Jeff Field. Welcome, Dave.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. So thanks for running me, Steve. Just presented a few slides to go through the project. In short, for those who don't know who L Y B S is, we're the Littleton Youth Baseball and Softball Organization. We are a nonprofit by one C three, completely volunteer-staffed. Players in our programs range from pre-K to high school years. This past year, twenty twenty five, we operated seasons in spring, summer, fall, and actually, we're doing winter clinics as well. We had over five hundred registrants this past year, which was a twenty two percent increase over twenty twenty four. So baseball and softball is clearly growing in town, which was part of the rationale to do this project, again, which I'll get into in a moment. The primary goals for our organization are to ensure the kids have fun, most of all, but also teach and develop their skills in these games, baseball and softball, and ultimately to enable and empower them to become great teammates and leaders in the community. And we work closely, as you would imagine, with both Parks and Rec and the L H S Athletic Department. That's just a primer on L Y B S. This project in particular, so I came before this committee back on February twenty seventh, early this year, and proposed a lights project installation at our Jet softball field. So Jet Field, just to orient you, see it on the map, it's the softball field down at the Russell Street complex. That's right next to Alumni Field. And under this this proposed project, we outlined that L Y B S would cover one hundred percent of the costs, which we did. We would manage the project and work closely with town boards, committees, et cetera. We did that. And now we're here to complete this last step with you tonight. In terms of rationale for the project, so I mentioned earlier the growing numbers in our programs, but Jet Field was most recently renovated in twenty eighteen. It is the primary softball field that's used in town by all of our youth programs, all of our divisions, but also the high school, J V and our programs. So consequently, scheduling on that field has become incredibly challenging in recent years, as the numbers continue to grow. The high school typically in the spring would play their games or does play their games starting at four P M. And so when we need to get on the field or after that, they tend to start at six fifteen, maybe even later. So, you know, sunset, it typically will allow those kids to get maybe a little bit more than an hour. Maybe the kids get one at bat, couple innings in the field, and it just has become a very, you know, unsatisfactory experience, not only for the kids in our town, but for kids and parents who are traveling from other towns later. So we looked at this and said, lights on this field would be extremely useful, would accommodate the growth, not only of our program, but would also lift up the entire softball program in town. And we've been in the fortunate position as a board, as we, to be able to raise sufficient funds in recent years through donors, our annual fundraiser events, and our sponsors. So we looked at this and said, this was a great opportunity to put funds to work, both for the league and the town. Next slide. So the project, the design we laid out, which is what we executed, was to put four light poles, two in the outfield, two around the infield, as you see marked on. This design with stars. The lights utilize this new type of technology called ball tracker, which now that we've actually got this installed, it's pretty cool to see. This is new L E D lighting that really focuses all of the illumination on the field itself. And it's very different. Actually, if you go down and you see the the bulbs that are lighting up above night, you'll notice the difference between the two styles and approaches. So power was and is sourced from the existing panel that's down at the field and the impact of lights. And I think we've seen this bear out already in our use as a really minimal impact to the residential. So again, just bringing us up to speed. Installation was fully completed the summer. So completed the work in August. Total final project cost actually came under budget. We estimated that it would be about one hundred and sixty three thousand base costs for the work. It came in at one hundred and sixty thousand eight twenty five. We were fortunate as well because we estimated that project could go up to as high as over two hundred and eight thousand if we had to do drilling through ledge around the field. And we did some pre-drilling boring and found out that we weren't going to hit ledge. So we got lucky there and saved about forty thousand dollars in doing so. And as mentioned, the lights are already in use. Here are some pictures. We've had games there starting September thirteenth. It was our first one with our senior division. So they're in use and it's great. From warranties and operating cost standpoint, these were important things that we covered upfront when we presented this project back in February. The equipment includes maintenance-free twenty five year warranty. Installation carries a one-year warranty. And then we outlined and did some math around projected utility costs based on conservative estimate of the number of days and hours that this field will be used. So impact, as you can see, is fairly terrible, you know, five, six hundred dollars a year. So basically, again, we're just here to say the lights are done. We executed on what we said we would when we came here in February. And as part of the process, if you recall, I didn't know, and this very clearly in start here, but when we talked about it back in February, because of the way this project was executed, meaning L Y B S does not own the fields and property here. So we did the work, we carried the cost, but we needed that transfer ownership technically of these lights to the owners of the field and the property, which is Welton Public Schools and the town. So, you know, we will actually stay very involved, I would imagine, in terms of, you know, use and maintenance partners on that front. But the actual ownership at this point becomes the schools and the tents. So that's what we're here to do.
Great presentation. Any questions or comments for Dave?
Thank you so much. This is really cool.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you. It was it was incredible project. It was executed, I would say, thankfully, almost flawlessly because we had great partners and vendors helping us. And really, you know, for myself and the board, we're just here as stewards. Again, we were fortunate enough to be able to raise these funds over the last several years and be put in the position to do this. So it benefits the town, and we're happy for that.
That lighting is incredible. It really is. It's just I can't believe it just illuminates the field, but still off, off glare during the parking lots.
So did you call it like a ball tracker light? Is it actually?
So that's the the manufacturer's terminology, trademark or whatnot. But i- if you go and you actually hopefully do take a chance to see a game down there, it it really, it 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 lights up just as, as Kelly said, the the field in and of itself. So you don't get, you know, typical old style lighting. Ball gets hit up in the air and players might lose it in the lights. This technology, it just, it doesn't count, however they designed it. So.
We appreciate your dedication and generosity. This is amazing.
Lots of kids get a chance to play under the lights. It's a whole thing. It's a different thing, isn't it?
It 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 is, you know. I mean, some of my core memories growing up playing baseball and other sports were games under the lights. And it just, it's a completely different experience. That game that I mentioned in that picture is back on September thirteenth. Unfortunately, I wasn't in town, but from what I heard, when the lights went on, there was just an enormous eruption in the change. So and players just loved it so far.
Excellent work, Dave. I want to thank you guys for moving forward with the project. I know like early on, there was talks that maybe that money was earmarked for Shaker Lane, and with everything that's going on at Shaker Lane to pivot and do this at Jet Field is a tremendous asset for this sports complex that's all of a sudden coming together at Alumni Field. So that's great. And on my way over here, I was I was thinking of, you know, people that had been involved in Hit-a-Thon and and I would be doing everyone else at this service to name a couple of people that were involved in the fundraising efforts in the last couple of years. But this has been a community-wide event taken place years and years and years for you folks to have raised the amount of money that that you have. And we're just so fortunate that you've been able to make this investment. So to everyone that participated in Hit-a-Thon and and the likes of baseball and softball registration, we appreciate it.
Yep, I agree.
All set there?
So we need to make a motion. So
You should change the amount though, to one hundred and sixty thousand eight hundred and twenty five.
So are we accepting the donation or are we taking ownership of the lights?
So the the lights are on Littleton Public School.
Yeah.
So it's a permanent asset on. We need to accept them. I don't think we ever actually gave up any rights or anything like that. We're just accepting the the donation of the lighting system formally.
The one hundred and sixty thousand.
Eight hundred and twenty five dollars.
I make a motion that Littleton Public Schools accept the donation in the amount of one hundred and sixty thousand eight hundred and twenty five dollars used to create a lighting system in the baseball field side of the middle school. That work?
We'll amend that, say, to Jet Field, or we'll amend that, say, you know, from a little few, they've gone softball to Jet Field.
From Littleton Youth to for Jet Field.
That's acceptable to me. Motion made by Janine. Seconded by Sean. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Job well done. Thank you.
Last point, we're gonna have a big celebration event come the spring, so we didn't want to mess up, but we'll do that in spring.
Is there, I was curious, is there like a setting, like a home run flicker? Did you get that? No?
We'll we'll look at it.
We're also looking at that same technology for Alumni Field.
Yes.
We would we would need to replace everything at Alumni. You can do that, right?
We're working with Musco and figuring out what we need to do for Alumni Field to update the lights to a similar lighting package. Yes.
That'd be great.
Yes, their current lighting is giving
Especially when we lose a pole and another pole during a game.
Yeah, well, we had three poles.
Yeah. All right.
Working on that too.
Next up, we have the superintendent's report. So Dr. Kelly Clancy will provide an update on the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six enrollment as of October first, twenty twenty five.
So October first, twenty twenty five, we have a total of one thousand six hundred and thirty two students in our district. Inclusive of ninety eight school choice students. We go back to last year at this time, we had a total enrollment of one thousand six hundred and fifty four students. So we're down by twenty two students. We had one hundred school choice students last year at this time. So we're our enrollment is close, but I think for the conversations that we've had in terms of the Shaker Lane School and district enrollment, it's very clear that resident enrollment is is going down a bit at this point in time, and school choice is is keeping us whole in terms of not going down too far. It's always important to look at the graduating class for each year. If you look at our twenty twenty five, October first enrollment, we have thirteen school choice students graduating. And we typically take seven in in kindergarten, depending on the projected enrollment at that time. So you can see that we're we're down six students right now. But what I found throughout the years is we're getting more students that are coming in and other grades that were down. And that's why we were we were still able to come in with ninety seven students or ninety eight students this year more correctly. Because I believe last year we had sixteen school choice students graduate. So that's very hopeful, right, when I look at that. Any questions?
Just kind of looking over the numbers real quick.
Quick question.
Sure.
I assume it's like someone transferring to the town, but does someone need to be in the class by freshman year they graduate Welton High, or is obviously currently senior year graduate?
Yeah, they can come in and they're senior year. No restriction. And Michelle, for your knowledge, you have four hundred and sixteen students as of October first.
Yeah, I think might be four fifteen.
Depends on the day.
Yeah, yeah. I would say four fifteen.
You were at four twenty five last.
Yeah, like I talked about that rolling sound.
Well, it's up from four eleven, which is the number that I think we've been using throughout the Shaker Lane slides.
We've been looking for fourteen.
Four fourteen. Okay. All right. The all right, very good. Moving right on. So just this is placeholder for new business, but reminder to submit your M C A S delegate form. Those of us, I think everyone, all of us got this packet last week. Sean has made your packet. So okay, so there's information in here about the joint conference November fourteenth. That must be the Friday. It is. So the conference runs the twelve through the fourteen. Three of us are going, right?
Right, the three of us. Yeah, and you don't have to go to the conference to attend the delegate meeting.
You guys will get involved at some point. Maybe next year that side will take take some interest.
My daughter's a little older.
Yeah. Lots to do for families to tape in November, so. All right, so we're all set with that. Do you have any questions to see me afterwards? So we've got a couple of presentations covered for this evening, the first of which is school improvement plan update. So the plan is to hear from all four principals. Each principal will share two major goal areas from their school improvement plan. So generally, we let you go in whatever order you want, and we'll stick with that. So we don't even have to go in order. Like, we could have
Like the proposal, Shaker Lane go on that.
I think at some point, Russell Street or Middle School's gotta go. Because you guys always get the luxury to change metal. You're never in the hot seat.
Hi, everyone.
Hello.
Happy to make this report, this update about our big goals for the year. And we, it's some, you know, you hadn't updated this time last last year. We had to buy an overview of you know, what our big goals were, and they remain the same. They're two-year goals, and they are very involved for the high schools, specifically related to M T S S, the Multi Tiered Systems Supports Program, aimed to provide, in this, we aim to provide academic, behavioral, and social emotional support for all of our students. And as you recall, there's tiered levels of support, typically consists of three tiers of support. Tier one, universal support. Tier two, targeted interventions. And tier three, intensive intervention for students. There's a lot more energy and engagement with our goals this year, this specific goal. Last year, the focus was especially on the development of our portrait of the learner, and we presented on that, and we're getting an update shortly about that. This year, I was really excited to find that we updated the L P S student accommodations intervention process flow chart. It makes it very easy to follow, so we'll be sharing that with parents in the meeting, but certainly with all the staff. I want to thank Lord Beth Steels for their work on this. This is in the district curriculum accommodation plan, clearly identifies well-designed process for each school, and this was a pivotal part of our goal. And they did it really for, by updating the flow chart. We're looking at different versions, and we went through the D cap, and they said, oh, people already updated this. This is fantastic. So thank you to them. We want to, this year, we want to reinforce the effectiveness and follow-up of our student support team with the Clear Process Manual. That's that development's underway already. More structured follow-through with the membership and also feedback to the teachers about we're in an area progress. We're gonna, and with that said, we want to ramp up the tracking of school-wide data related to student performance. Sorry, I mentioned the importance of that for our M C A S scores. So we want to make sure we're continuing to do that, and you had a regularly scheduled intervals. We also expect to increase our communication of student progress with students and parents. This is beyond challenging behaviors with concerns of progress reports and term grades. We want to spot, as we, we want to spot concerns earlier. This is something that we're always striving for. We're gonna continue to do that. So a lot of this is mentioned, what I'm mentioning tonight is a continuance of what we started last year and here before, really. Continuing to provide more common planning time. This is a school improvement goal. It was identified as a priority area in our accreditation report. So this is underway, and it's going to be Uh, so this is underway, and it's going to be, I I'll use the word ramp up again, it's gonna be ramped up even more from last year. I've already reached out to department coordinators and individual teachers who wanted, who have joint projects. Uh, and want to collaborate. It could be also across departments, but most of it will take place within departments. Uh, there's already two, our two Spanish teachers are already together, our English department and math department are planning to get together soon to review uh to do MCAS data analysis. Uh, this occurs during the school day flex blog, and teachers can discuss the structural practices and review data together. We can, we're going to continue to strengthen our UDL practices. I know you hear a lot about universal design for learning. This course addresses academic behavior, social emotional well-being. Um, the across the district, this is administrative, uh, uh, our administrative council, uh is a, there's a new across the district initiative on administrators to engage in walkthroughs and have feedback sessions with students uh with teachers specifically about what they're observing, and we have a new uh observation form that will be very helpful for us to get teachers, and I think all the principals have started to share it with the teachers, so they, there's no no gotcha moments, no surprises. It's supposed to be more coaching and positive feedback, separate from the evaluative process. So of course, universal design learning is part of good instruction. We look for that, and we would consider if there were weaknesses in the evaluation pro- process. But this particular uh process is 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 really to be uh positive promotion of UDL and positive feedback for teachers as much as possible, spotlighting what they're doing really well. Um, we're gonna ask teachers uh at the high school about their specific implementation of UDL, and I imagine that's occurring at the other schools. Uh, and that's already underway in our goal-setting sessions. And the next goal, um that I'd like to comment on tonight is related to our you know, our vision of a graduate, as we were calling it, for Portrait of a Learner. We had an identified area for the collaborative conference uh report, and we have actively been attending to this goal. And uh, oh, we've already dedicated two PD days this month, past month, September tenth, September is already flown by, and twenty-fourth, focused on assessing and demonstrating Portrait of a Learner. So at our September tenth PD, teachers met in departments and reviewed the six competency areas for the LHS Portrait of a Learner and and identified skills in each area. They began to determine methods of assessing what proficiency looks like for each of the skills in the six competency areas. Um, at our September twenty-fourth uh PD, topics and goals focused on number of things, but creating digital portfolios was a primary one for grades nine, ten, and eleven. We're launching that that the digital portfolios that we've already launched them now. Uh, and they're not going, this is not going to apply to the class of two thousand twenty-six, so they're probably grateful for that. We're going to focus on uh nine, ten, and eleven. And they've already created Google folders for all the six competency areas. That will become part of what we call a digital portfolio for students. Um, the teachers also reviewed a roadmap for grades nine to twelve that show current course assessment co-curricular experiences that students may use in their digital portfolios. They shared, discussed a specific timeline and tasks for LHS to complete each month during the school year, and that's a really important uh process to have. Very well organized because we have our accreditation visit in May, the first week of May. Um, they also engaged in sharing, discussing a sample Google slideshow for students, so make their presentations in the spring really helpful. You know, uh, really uh organized and structured and simple to understand, and we gave a template to all the students, and that's what we're going to uh have them present in the spring. Uh, October sixth, we had uh an advisory cl- uh session where our students uh were introduced to the Portrait of a Learner and the assessment process that they'll engage in. Students created the folders, as I've already mentioned, on that day. And uh, I'll just wrap up with a couple of highlights of what to expect uh as we move through the school year. The students will be uploading assignments to the folders to document progress that reflect on specific assignments. How they relate to the Portrait of a Learner using prompts and the template I mentioned. And then they will uh engage in presentations to their advisory, uh highlighting highlighting the skills that they chose. And if you remember, the skills are critical thinking, you know, actually, those, you can actually list them off for your effective communicator, skillful collaborator, critical thinker, um mindful learner, healthy and well-balanced learner, and engaged citizen. And so all the students will collect evidence of how they can showcase that they they have um achieved skills in those areas and can demonstrate that. So um, we made a lot of progress already this month, and I'm happy, I'm proud of the staff, how gauged they've been in the process. I'm feeling that we're well prepared, we're well on our way to being prepared for the uh valuable accreditation visit in May.
Excellent. I'm gonna try something different. I'm gonna let us roll through the entire presentation, withhold all our questions or comments to the end. You if it's trying to move. And oftentimes, we we get more information that might answer your question. Alright.
Alright, uh talking for the middle school, um the two goals that we're gonna focus on, one is an extension of some work that we've we've already been doing, according to school improvement plan, and another one will be sort of a new focus. Well, it's been in the S I P, uh, I want to pay particular attention to it. So for the middle school, what the the thing that we're gonna focus on the most. Um, the goal, the original goal is really around the implementation and the development of the implementation of UDL practices in the classroom. Beyond, moving beyond just ideas and choice boards and the simple stuff, but really rolling up our sleeves and doing doing the actual work. And one of those tasks that I challenged my staff with a few weeks ago was to move our students from what we call emerging status of assessments, right? This is mostly teacher-driven, where the teacher decides what that assessment is gonna be. It may take one or two, three different forms to a student-led focus, where the students decide how they will assess themselves. They'll reflect, they'll create their own rubrics, they'll decide what form that assessment takes, and it gives students that ownership and opportunity to 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 demonstrate what they know and what they've learned, but to do it on their terms in a way that that's gonna help, allow them to shine more brightly than just a usual, you know, multiple choice, or fill in the blank, or essay, or anything else. So this is an opportunity for students to really become invested in that. So it is a departure from some of the things that we've done, because teachers by nature, we tend to be a little bit more um controlling is not the right word, but we want to make sure that we can can have control over the responses, what we're looking for, what we're hoping to see. And this is giving control over to the students. And so what will happen is each teacher, at one point in time this year, will generate and allow the students to create their own student-led assessment. It can be a unit, it can be a small quiz, it can be in a small area, it can be over a lesson. But it will become completely student-driven, where the students will decide what the content is, what the assessment will be, how they'll be assessed, and how they'll reflect on it. If each teacher in our building does that one time, and every student has about ten teachers over the course of the year, students will have at least ten um student-led assessments, their own assessments that they do each year. So thirty times between the time they enter middle school to the time they leave, they will be creating their own assessments and their own opportunities to show what they know, rather than using the standard format that we may have used in the past. So this is that next step in UDL, really getting students to be in control and charged and vested in that. So that's gonna be our our primary goal. So we spent our first two staff, our two first two early release days looking at that, talking about the the structure of it, and giving time for our our staff to be able to begin to implement that. Um, one teacher has already started that process, another one began today, and I'm very excited because our staff is really throwing themselves into this idea of letting go a little bit and and giving students that opportunity to be creative or to 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 venture out to something different. And so that has begun, and and it's quite exciting. The second goal is something that that we put in our S I P. Um, after COVID, we we lost a lot of our the the middle school used to have a lot of great evening events and events for families, and and after COVID, we lost a lot of that. We used to have like a a community volleyball tournament that teachers would have, and they were vicious, I gotta be honest. I joined, I joined the teacher team, and it it got ugly. And then we had like a cornhole tournament where community, where families would come in, and that got very competitive. Like, that was, that was really something to see. We just, we haven't brought that stuff back, and I, it's always been my goal for the middle school to be a real hub for the community. And in order to strengthen those bonds between the middle school, our staff, our students, and the community, we need to find ways to invite people and to be a part of it, and and just not just strictly academic senses. So that's the goal as well, is to work with our our school council to determine what is what is it that the community could really benefit from? What 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 does that look like? What's the outcome? What do we hope to achieve? Is this something fun? Is it something informative? Is this something that makes our our community better? That is something that we're gonna work on this year to determine. How do we start building those new traditions at Littleton Middle School to strengthen those bonds? So those are our basic two. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Um, for Russell Street's two goals, both of them are really continuations of what we laid as a groundwork from last year. Um, the first revolving around our Stripe initiative, and um for our goal this year, we want to have many more opportunities where the students, the Russell Street students are the ones taking the lead on some of those uh Stripe initiatives, or building wide assemblies, or community events that that incorporate our Stripe program. Uh, we had a few glimmers of that student voice last year that I really want to build off of. One was uh a group of students working with Ms. McKinley, read a book about an artist named Bren Bataclan um that they were really inspired by, and his work, all about bringing smiles to uh the community, and uh with her help and with the help of the LEF, we were able to bring Bren Bataclan into the school last year to give an assembly for our students, and every student walked away with a a piece of art that was inspired by um by by his work, which was really great, and it was the students that that said, hey, we wanna pursue this, we wanna, you know, help uh Ms. McKinley write the LEF grant, we wanna write the letter to Bren Bataclan, said to invite him to come into our school. Um, the second example was a a group of fifth-grade girls last year said, we want a fifth-grade talent show. And I said, okay, go plan it, go find a sponsor, go find, you know, uh, uh, someone who can who can help plan it. Come back to me when you have things sorted out, and we'll see what we can do. And sure enough, I think on the last day of school, um, we fit in a fifth-grade talent show and invited the third and fourth graders to come down and see some of the talents from our fifth graders. Um, so those two examples um really showed me that that Russell Street needs to have that student voice in all things, and especially when we're talking about Stripe, the values that we want to instill in our students. We want the student's voice on on how we can do that best, that that resonates with them. So uh, we're looking forward this year to to gathering um student voices in the form of, you know, lunches with me, or or having different panels of students and um identifying ways in which we want, or the students want to see Stripe in in the school, and how they wanna build a sense of community and a sense of belonging in Russell Street. Um, the second goal is a continuation of our implementation of wit and wisdom now that we are in year two. And um the this year's goal focuses around finding the areas of wit and wisdom that we can adjust or adapt to better meet the students' needs. Um, last year, the the directive from us, uh, in implementation of year of year one was, we're going to do the program as written. So we, so we can know what this program is, what it isn't, what it has, what it doesn't have, but we need to do it with fidelity or integrity, or two of the adjectives that we would use a lot, so that we can understand, you know, what this program is and and how it operates. We have done that, and um in doing so, our teachers learned a lot. Um, they learned what really works well with the program, everything that it has, and they also found some some blind spots, or some areas that maybe focused a little too much time on one area, where our students already had those skills and not enough time on other areas where our students need a little more support. So this year, um, through the lens of universal design for learning and um the the documents that the other two principals mentioned, um, we're going to find the ways where we can adjust or adapt or incorporate more UDL principles into the wisdom uh curriculum. Not throwing the curriculum out, still doing the program with its still, with its standards and essential questions and and core content, um, but finding the areas of the program where our teachers can have a little more autonomy to make those adjustments um because they know their students best and what's going to resonate most with them.
This is lovely. Hi, everyone. Um, Shaker Lane here. Um, so goal number one, and we worked on, we actually started to work on this this summer. Um, the assistant principal Rebecca Deacon and I were finding, and I think, you know, as the students get older, some of the dysregulation with students coming in are getting a little bit more and more challenging. So we um, we actually were fortunate enough to attend a PD last spring um by that's um Lynn Snow with Jessica Minahan, who was a was a very uh well-known V C B A behavior specialist, and myself, Rebecca Deacon, our school psychologist and school adjustment council, attended that and walked away literally implementing some of those practices in the afternoon and said, we really need to bring this back. We need some fresh eyes, we need some new ideas for our staff. So we have been, so this brings us to goal number one, is to enhance the ability to recognize um underlying messages behind students' behaviors and really implement some practical strategies. Strategies that between, you know, the four of us as our clinical team, you know, over a hundred years of experience in public schools, we're just looking for something different. And um her book, The Behavior Code, that's been out since, I think, two thousand fifteen, was a refresher for some of us, and for some of us, it was new. But it's really looking at, you know, the behaviors and starting with her PD that we actually brought staff in. So in September, we brought Jessica Minahan, Minahan into our staff for a PD session. And it was amazing to see the intent in the staff in that professional development, just scanning the room and seeing how intent they were with their attention. And, you know, coming up and sharing with Ally Gilman and a few of us that this was so powerful and so like hands-on takeaway, we can try these practices to really try and connect with students, figure out what's going on. Um, so that's really the first piece towards this goal. Um, and the other piece to it, um, we have a response team that meets every other week, which is our clinical team. And we are analyzing our response calls in the fact that when we're responding, we're writing down what works so that we can go back to those strategies and say, alright, with Justin McCarthy, this strategy really worked. Want you to know that next time you're working with him. So it's really, it's not a log of our calls, it's a log of what's working for each student, and how do we connect with that student next time right off the bat. So putting that in place, um really just um looking at our SSTs through different lenses, when we set our goals, like how are we how are we setting these goals to really get to the academics? Because a lot of the students that are coming in, the needs are social, emotional connections, understanding their behaviors. They're not able to articulate to us that they're nervous, they don't want to do this, something's bothering them, they didn't eat well this morning, there was a an argument in the house. And so we have to figure that out. Um, kind of crawling their their heads in. And so that's really our focus this year, is really to support the social emotional needs of our students. So that being said, we can move on to academics. So goal number two, um, very parallel to what Principal McDonald shared is in our second year of implementation of wit and wisdom is looking at how can we make this program better? How can we look at what we did last year uh with the integrity of the program? But then pare it down just a little bit more palatable. So what our teachers found last year is some pieces were redundant, and they were doing three turn-in talks, or three um different activities where some classes needed three and other classes were like, we're one and done, my kid's got it, we're gonna move on. So giving the teachers the autonomy to tailor the program to best fit the needs in front of their students, in front of them, so the students in front of them. Um, we are also partnering with Leslie University this year to um have them come in also do some um uh just some rounds of observations and give us some feedback. I believe Russell Street already had their session, ours is coming up next week. And then we have PD at the end of the month um about Leslie University helping us grow this program, making sure we're hitting all of the areas of reading, phonemic awareness, phonics fluency, comprehension, and vocabulary. And those are our goals, our big goals for the year.
Thank you.
Want me to say, questions for me?
But so it's great to hear from everybody. Thank you so much for the uh presentation. Does anybody have any questions or comments for Shaker Lane?
I, I have a quick comment, just um noticing to the students you have in kindergarten right now, with the warning COVID. Right, uh, twenty twenty first graders who have a one-year-old, which is a very interesting time to get shut off from the world, and so not surprising to sort of see, you know, a need for a completely different approach to social emotional behavior, probably in in all your hundred years of experience, and just like completely different, and so it's it's exciting to see sort of PD that's engaging in marketing, thinking out of the box. It's a very different group of kids than any of us have ever known.
A lot of it does stem to relationship building.
Yeah.
Which takes time, so I feel like that's why September, the first few weeks are great. Then it gets really rocky, then those relationships form, and then hopefully by November, December, we get some some momentum going. But it really takes time, especially the little ones, and just looking at the way children are growing up a little differently, probably than I did, or maybe some of you did, where there's a lot of technology, there's a lot of instant gratification, there's a lot of you know, I want this, I want it now, I'm not gonna take no. Having to wait is is hard for some of them, just because of the environment that they're in. So the world we're in right now. Well, I always appreciate hearing these school improvement plans at the beginning of the year, because then we hear at the end um how it all turned out. So it's it's great to have this introduction. And I'm wondering, I I love your, uh, both of your goals, but particularly goal number one, where you're really trying to understand the reason behind the behaviors. I'm wondering
I'm wondering how you will know if, when you're successful with this? Like when we come back, you come back and we hear from you in the spring. Um, I mean, it's hard to measure something like this. But what, what measures of success are you looking for?
Well, one tangible one that I think would be easy to, to look at and evaluate, and we actually did it today in our response meeting, is how many times are we responding to Michelle Kane? How many times did the strategy work? Um, and when we looked at our data this week, there were five calls on Monday for support. Four calls on Tuesday, three calls on Wednesday and two today. So it's going to be interesting to look at that data for student-wise and week-wise, because Mondays are tough. Mondays are tough for us as adults. Mondays are even more difficult for little kids. So we do find Mondays are tough. Fridays can also be tough, because then it's kind of, you're, you're going back to a place that's a little more unstructured, as it should be, the weekends with family. Um, so it's going to be interesting to look at that data. To me, that is hard data that we can tangibly look at. Um, I'm think, just, I'm thinking of one little person we have in first grade and the relationship we're trying to build with this child. And it's up and down. I just think that's going to be more organic information and just seeing, you know, how is this child presenting now? And what is this going to look like in December? What's it going to look like in June? That's going to be really hard. I agree with you to take that. It's just maybe going to be exper- experiential, experiential data.
Yeah, maybe like a case study, like one particular child who's struggling and see how this approach impacts that child.
Lot of students coming to us with trauma, um, different types of trauma, environmental, you know, food insecurities. It's, it's different.
I don't really have a question, but I just wanted to say, I love hearing that, that you've done all this work for all the years and you still want to try and learn new stuff.
Yeah, thanks, Sean.
Very good. Uh, do you have any questions for Russell Street?
So I, I guess it was a similar question to what I had for Michelle with your first goal. I love the idea of student agency and students taking more control with your, um, your Stripe community initiatives. And um, when we see you again in the spring, what would we be looking for to measure success with that particular initiative? I think the other one is more measurable.
Sure. So like I mentioned, I'm, I'm looking forward to putting together a panel of students that, that can meet with me. Or that we have a Stripe team that meets monthly. Um, so we can put that panel together and we will have meeting agendas and minutes and notes to take. Um, and also, um, when we have our monthly Stripe meetings, I think something that, that we can keep track of is. How often is the microphone in the hands of an adult versus how often is the microphone in the hands of students running, running those meetings? We had um, an A I presentation that, that Ms. McGregor helped us out with. And she said, but I want students to, to present on, on the new technologies and A I. And we made it a point to, to make sure that those students were the ones that were presenting to their peers. So um, two quick things off the top of my head of, uh, how we can measure it and um, make sure that, that we're not the ones talking at the students about Stripe. But they are the ones teaching each other and showing each other what Stripe means.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Yeah, I'll stat, I, I really love that idea of the student involvement, right? Because, you know, those that want praise in, in the terms of Stripe award, right? They, they sometimes know how to receive that, like do good in the eyes of an adult. Um, and they're not necessarily their peers. So to, to empower the student body to say, you know, you can earn Stripe Award through recognition it gets. There, it's everybody thinking about student behavior, you know, in the workforce. We all know people that like, are great to their managers, but are terrible coworkers. Um, so it, it just, it's a really, you know, it's a really great idea and it's worth trying. And I think it just sheds a new light on the program, so.
Yeah, one, one aspect of our monthly meetings that we had last year was um, a student nominated Stripe for each uh, a student in each classroom. And uh, those stripes meant more to the kids that received them than any stripe that they could have received from a staff member. Um, getting one from their peers and each classroom had different ways of nominating and, and selecting the student that would get that one stripe award. But that was, you know, even more um, just evidence that the students really benefit from, you know, working with each other.
I also was just going to comment on the student voice goal. My daughter is part of the fifth grade class that urged the talent show. And I was surprised, but so pleasantly surprised that you were going through with it. I was like, this is new and he was, he's doing it. Um, but I think it, and that was going to be my comment, sort of Russell Street Middle School and High School. This theme of student-centered, community-centered and bringing that in. And appreciate that coming from school leadership, like there's a trend of leadership and student autonomy and knowing who they are. And really having that sort of internal accountability. And so appreciate that in age-appropriate ways throughout schools. Also social emotional and Shaker Lane, and then building up through the years and ways that are.
Thanks, thank you.
Come on, Jason, we're gonna, we're gonna, we'll find a question for you. I got, I got something, but I'll, I just, somebody else go first.
I have a question.
Sure.
Um, I love hearing about the, the student led, um, putting together their projects and their assessments. How much do you, uh, i- is there a way that um, curriculum guidelines on what, what? You know, we, we do have framework that we are, we are teaching within.
Yep.
How much do you communicate about that to students so that they, they, do they feel they have a framework? Is this like totally free-form?
It's not totally free-form. I, I imagine that some of this is going to evolve over time, you know, just given this is our first time out. One of the things, and I, I forgot to mention is, when I first stood up here is, when we, when we started this process, we did it by departments. And my hope would be that there would be some commonalities that would strength them through. So for example, the E L A department in our building got together. And they all chose the same standard. So that six, seven and eight will be doing this, this, this student-led, but using the same standard. So that it creates a, sort of a continuity between the three grades. And will give us an opportunity to really see how that progress is measured. So I was really impressed to see them thinking along that line. And I know our, our social studies program is doing the same thing. And we'll see it come, come true with all the others. So we, I don't know if we'll get to that point where we're giving the kids like, here's our, you know, here's the, here's the, the standards that we're trying to hit. But I imagine we would, um, as part of that, because it could only help their framing of what it is that they're doing, but um.
And it seems like they are, that's, that's a great age to start talking about like, you know, yeah, this, we want you to be part of this. But you have to understand, we also are being held to account from outside forces. I think that's, that's one of those things that twelve, thirteen-year-olds go, oh, wait, wait, my, my teacher isn't all-powerful.
Yeah.
You know?
You have those moments sometimes as a principal too, when they, when you come in and you're doing an observation, the kids are like, they know something's up. And so the kids will ask you and you say, well, you know how you, you get grades from your teachers? Well, the teachers kind of get grades from us. And it, it really kind of levels it a little bit. You can see that the wheel's kind of turning. And this is, could be one of those opportunities where they really get to see. That process of teaching and learning from a slightly different perspective. And hopefully we'll create a little bit more ownership and a little bit more mindfulness when it comes to what it is that they choose to do. And if they really choose to venture out, how do they bring those elements in? And it's not as if the students are just going to do this on their own. We say, here, go to it, we'll see you in two weeks, show me what you got. You know, that's going to, there's going to be a lot of guidance along the way, because some of, some students will, will be really hesitant, you know? Because it could be overwhelming, the, the total number of possibilities. Other kids will just jump right in. So it's going to take a lot of work as we, as we go through this this year and then perfect the program as we continue to do it in future years. But I'm, I'm excited to see how this goes. And I have a feeling that our staff will begin to realize quickly, this is actually better, easier for them, right? It's easier to grade, it'll be easier to manage. It, when I think when it really gets going, I think they will be able to see that, that this is far more powerful than, than. You know, the standard assessments that we, that we've saw often given.
And it sparked new teachers.
Yeah, right?
Right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think there's going to be a tension between student control over the assessments. And a teacher's need to have consistency for grading, because they do have to generate report cards.
Yeah.
So it'll be interesting over the course of the year to see how that sorts out.
Right.
You know, are, are, do you still have like letter grades on your?
Report numbers, but yeah.
Yeah. So, you know, how to figure out with all of these different options for assessments, how to create consistency in grading.
And that'll be, that'll be one of the real tricks this year is having students determine how that assessment is graded. Right? What are, what are the, what are the, the, the must knows or those essential understandings that, that a student must have? What skills should they have mastery of? And then how does that, how does that get assessed? And so that'll be curious to see too, how do they assess themselves? How do they assess each other? What, what role does the teacher play in all this as a guide? Rather than just the disseminator.
How much of those kids are tougher than, than the teachers?
Yeah. It's more often than not, that's the case. They're way harder on themselves than, than the teacher is. So it'll, it'll be, yeah, we might have to say like, okay, pull back, take it easy on yourself, right? You're eleven, right? Let's, 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 let's not worry about college yet. Yeah.
Yeah. See them get together and some of them are like, no, no, we're going to go out there.
Yeah, big dreams, big dreams. That'd be great.
I'll, I'll say, I, I, I love your goals. I think they're bold, but I think at the same time, they're low-res, like.
Yeah.
Which is okay. I'm saying that's a, that's a good thing, like this, this flipping the idea of the student evaluating their own success. For one assignment, you know, isn't, isn't going to, if they, if they do a poor job of that, it's really not going to upset the fact that they didn't master some essential. Learning skill that they, that they needed, but it gives them an opportunity to um, to have a different perspective in the process.
Well, you're a hundred percent right, especially as in this initial year, because I think one of the worst things we could do is say, okay, we're, we're, we're getting rid of everything we know. And we're, we're going to completely redo this. I don't think we would have, I think this is true of any school. You would lose staff investment, because all of a sudden, all the years and the work they put in, you're saying, okay, we're going to scrap that, we're going to move on to something else. And I think you're right, it would put that on the students to be like, oh my God, if I don't do this right, you know what I mean? This, this could really hurt me over the long term. This is just going to be a single assessment in the course of a year.
Right.
I, what I like, the fact though, is you have, you know, you have five content teachers and five, you know, five arts teachers. You know, that's, over the course, that's at least one a month, you know, if it's spaced out right, where the kids are doing this. So, so it's going to be a consistent program. And over the course of like those three years, that's thirty times, they'll get really, really proficient at the problem-solving part of it too. You know, it's one of the things that we talked about to staff. We often talk about kids, you know, they, they've lost the problem-solving abilities that they, that they once had, you know, think critically. You know, these things that educators, we say all the time, well, this is where we put our money, where our mouth is, say, okay, we have to teach that skill. And this is how we teach that skill. How are you going to solve this problem? I'm not going to just give it to you. We'll figure it out together, but you're going to figure it out. And I think that's the part of this that I'm most excited about, is we get to move from, you know, just thinking about the, the deficits that our students face. But trying to create more powerful, meaningful learners out of them. I, and I think that's going to be the, the part that you can't really assess. But I think will prove itself over time as they move through the middle school and into the high school, that problem-solving, the solving ability and that critical thinking aspect, I think will be tops. I really, I really look forward to it.
I think I misunderstood when you were saying um, a student-led assessment. I was thinking at the unit level, but you're thinking it's more at like the lesson level?
It could be unit level. I think that's where the teacher will decide based on their students. You know, each class is going to be different, because class demographic, pay per search difference. So they're going to have to really think about and be mindful about how they roll this out, especially the first time. But um, it might start small, right? Just as we initially, but ideally, we get to those, those end-up unit assessments as well. And that certainly could be a place for that. What I want to move, I, I just want our students to move from, you know, taking information in one column, moving it to another column and column. And getting graded on that. What we really want is that, that understanding, that mathematical thinking almost across all subjects, right? That number fluency that we, that, that kids need, but to see that in, in the other subjects, so that they just have a really well-rounded understanding, deep understanding of the content. And can just display that in any number of forms.
Yeah, it'll be great to, maybe when you come back to talk about this in the spring, if you had some, some specific examples that. That would be.
Absolutely present on that, yeah.
Yeah, so I was going to say like, that hearing about the school improvement plans, right? The school committee improvement plan would be re-watching this twenty, thirty-minute portion of the meeting prior to the update, so that we have.
Um, challenge accepted.
It's a challenge to us, right?
Yeah.
And then we'll be better prepared to take the information in. That's the name, see how all this goes.
Right, I think, I think so, I agree.
And you're, you're uh, you know, a nighttime event, it's, you know, I, I applaud the effort. I, I hope for your wildest success. So tough these days, right?
It really is.
Everyone's just so busy. If, when they're not busy, they need to take a deep breath.
But my, my hope, Justin, is I had to create something that is, that is so meaningful that they'll make time.
Absolutely.
That's the challenge.
It'll feel like a deep breath to come.
Yeah, you know what I mean? Get out of the rut, but, yeah.
I, I love it. It's, 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 it was challenging.
It's going to be a lot.
You know that.
I do. But that's, but you said it's bold and that's why, you know, anything we're doing is we're, you know, taking it to explain.
You know, the attendance is less than uh, mind-blowing.
I tried something.
We tried.
I tried something like that in my first year. I brought Marion Ryan, the, the middle sex D A in to talk about social media and the harms of it. And I was so excited. I was like, because her office is fantastic. Man, I, I put it out there and I built it up with three parents show up. And you're like, oh, this is so disheartening, but so it, it can't be pretty worse than that. I already have, the bar is already set extremely low, so you know.
Well, two would be worse.
Two would be worse, fair enough, fair enough.
But I think we should start by having an event to celebrate your nomination as a Blue Ribbon School. That can't fall off the, the radar.
Desi has said that they will do something and they emailed a couple of times asking for more information. But I think the, the expectation was the states would take the time to honor that. Desi has not said how they intend to do that. Um, it would have been really nice to have that banner on the building, but, but I'm hoping, I'm hoping that Desi does something to. If, if, if that program is no longer going to be, that Desi can create something that is equally prestigious and meaningful to the schools, because it is a big honor. I, I don't take it myself, like, this is all on the, the teachers, the students, the families, like, they're the ones doing the work. And I just would love to see Desi, you know, um, recognize that in, in.
Yeah, I mean, there are only six schools in the state that got that.
Six.
That got that.
All.
Visit all those in a day.
Is that?
So she can visit six schools in a day, the governor. It's a really big.
Next time I go to Harvard Women's Basketball Games, I'll, 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 I'll hit her up after and be like, she could do it.
She should come by.
Yeah.
We're not forgetting about it, so we'll make.
Yeah, no, I don't think they forgot about it. I just, I hope, I hope they make it something.
Their plan.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I'm not worried about it, though.
Well, we should at least have ice cream and Justin can tell us one time.
That's right.
Alright.
Alright, thanks so much.
Thank you.
Alright, big for me. Last but not least, I got something for the high school. You want to start?
Sure, so.
We're so disappointed when I.
Um, no, I was really interested in the, the Google slide template that you're going to have every student.
Yep.
Um, prepare their achievement on all, is it all six? Criteria for.
Eventually, we might start with just a focus on two or three this spring. And then we'll build up to a, sort of, crescendo at the end, you know, with the, the senior year, there'll be, we actually have a design already made for the senior year. And they'll be using a Google uh, site. So thanks to Paul Orzak, our library media specialist, who created that already. So the goal would be to get to that point where they would look and reflect back on their four years. Ultimately, the current freshmen who have started this could choose an assignment from something that really stood out sophomore year, even freshman year. And uh, and showcase that in a presentation to their advisory, uh, their senior year. So there'll be an ability to choose across different assignments, or something exciting that they did in their senior year, that they, they're really thrilled about. They want to share, because about how this, you know, expressed how they're such a skillful collaborator or effective communicator.
Yeah, I mean, I love the idea of providing the template to freshmen, so that, because once they're seniors, it's hard to remember what they.
And really on what Jason was saying, we wanted to make, I've told the staff on our presentation, that we really want them to be, there's an old, uh, you'll know this expression in education. That we want the teacher to be the guidance side, not the sage on the stage. So they, the, the, this is, I emphasize this in my presentations, the fact that this is a student-led presentation, they create the portfolio, they have to manage it. They'll have regular check-ins just to, from, with their advisory teacher, and I think you know about our advisory model. Ideally, the student, the advisory teacher who's assigned ninth grade stays with that group of students all, all the way through to, to the time they graduate. So they've built that relationship and connection. But they'll, the teachers are just monitoring their progress and providing, you know, coaching tips and feedback. They're not, it's not, not grading them on it, it's just making sure they're prepared for their presentation and holding them accountable to be ready. Because it is a requirement for the students. Um, but that approach with the students, it's very self-directed. From grade nine all the way through, and they own it. And uh, you know, it builds off some of the stuff that's already happening at the younger schools. I mean, they call and talked about uh, student presentations and things like that, student leadership. Uh, and so that's what we're going, you know, that will all come to a showcase in the spring this year. And then we'll, and we'll learn from this experience too and see while we have editor process, we'll see how we have, you know, we have to approve it. The cool thing is that we're launching it in the spring and the visiting committee will be here at the time when some of these presentations will be happening. So they'll get to see it firsthand. That doesn't always coincide, but they'll be able to go into, we want to purposely schedule some of the advisory sessions when the visiting committee is here. So that they'll see uh, student presentations.
Well, it, as, as I mentioned with some of the others too, I'd love to see some examples. Well, it, as, as I mentioned with some of the others too, I'd love to see some examples when you come back in the spring to talk about this.
Oh, and, and that, a lot of schools, and you know this from um, Parker. They invite community members and parents and to do presentations, Innovation Academy, Tingsburg does the same thing. One of our teachers is a former principal at Innovation Academy, so been able to talk to him a lot about what he, what he went through and how he facilitated the process. Um, so we may get to a point, especially in that senior presentation where we invite. I think it would be nice to be, if the kids were open to it, have some school committee members come in, maybe even this spring. Um, I know that the visiting committee will want, if you don't know this already, they will want to meet with uh, certainly Justin and probably some other school committee members. To, to find out, you know, more about Littleton High School, um, and just the support, the community support for the schools, which is quite strong. So I think uh, you know, that, that's an opportunity there to bring in community members. And, and, and build on that model, that's, it's well-known across the country. The Heiser schools.
Yeah.
Sizer, David Sizer.
Yes, yeah, yeah. I think it'll be so interesting once, once you see those presentations, if there's any true lines. Across the presentations about memories that the kids have of like opportunities that they had all through high school that seem to be common among them.
Yeah.
Learn a lot from.
And they, and the kids can showcase things that are specific to coursework, that might demonstrate the critical thinking. They could also, I think I've mentioned this in a previous presentation, they can also showcase something that they're really, it could be a depth of presentation. That they traveled to Anaheim, California, made a presentation there. They went to, we did have a student do that a couple of years ago, was award-winning. Um, you know, and we've had students have great achievements in music and art, and they yawned um, the high school curriculum. And they, they can showcase that as well as demonstrate their skill.
So, one of the um, things that adds a lot of value. And another, um, is the, when you said the community being part of it. Um, students are encouraged to find someone in the community. That is an expert at what they're working on. And um, some of, some of those experiences are, are amazing.
Yeah, I, and you remember the, the STEM uh, research projects that were presented to you?
Yeah.
So, you know, Nico Jacob stands out as someone who's done it a couple of times and been very successful. Um, there were two wonderful presentations by students last year, called Vividly. And uh, you know, she might wanna reach out and have that professor who she was working with and having virtual meetings with. Come, come out and see her presentation, that kind of thing. So this, there'll be lots of opportunities for that. Right now, we wanna keep it sort of low stakes for the kids, it's the first time doing it. So, and take the pressure off of having like an au- a major audience, so that they will have, you know, they'll be presenting in front of their peers and their advisory teacher. And maybe, but they can invite in another teacher or counselor, and if they are, if they really want to, they can have, these are brief presentations. And we wanted to keep that to, you know, keep it, it'll be a bigger deal probably when they're, in their senior year, but there'll be more time allotted. But the, the, this first rollout this spring, we wanted to keep it low stakes, get them comfortable with the process, and then they'll all have to do it again next year, so. And we'll, we'll build on that. Great, I can't check so much.
Well, yeah, I have a quick question for you before we leave this topic. It's so, it's interesting to me that goal number one across all four schools really focused on student-centered learning. Was that a theme in your leadership meetings or was that a big coincidence?
No, it's not a coincidence. We, we, we work together and, and we identify areas that uh, uh, we wanna work on that's consistent to all schools.
Oh, that's, it's fantastic. I love the continuity from, right, just.
Good answer.
Thank you.
Yes.
I didn't wanna make you hang in like it wasn't a good answer. Alright, so our second presentation for this evening is an update on the Portrait of a Learner, goals and objectives. Um, Elizabeth Steele, Director of Teaching and Learning, will present an update on Portrait of a Learner.
Glad we did that little boomerang, because we ended up finishing on really talking about Portrait of a Learner, actually, for the high school. So we'll just continue on with the Portrait of a Learner. Alright, so last year we presented um, an update with regards to our Portrait of a Learner. And so I'm going to provide an update to the update, but also try to provide some context to sort of base ourselves and remind ourselves and for anyone that might be new. That this is new information for. So Portrait of a Learner provides a framework for what we want our students to know. And to, and be able to do upon their graduation from Littleton Public Schools. And it's really our opportunity to make our vision actionable. And so making what we want a student leaving Littleton, the skills that they're gonna have, the disposition toward learning. Be able to be something that they, they learn and expand and enhance throughout all of their schooling here with the Littleton Public Schools. The purpose of a Portrait of a Learner is really to answer the question on the previous slide. Thank you, that are, what are the skills, knowledge and disposition that learners need to be successful in a rapidly changing, increasingly diverse and interconnected world? And so when we, that's a very big, broad question, which is why Portrait of a Learner, Learner. We try to be specific, but there's multiple layers to it, right? So it can be big and broad. And many different areas in which our students can really learn, grow and develop those skills. So for a little bit to take a step back, full context here, vision of a, of a graduate. Is where Portrait of a Learner came from. Vision of a graduate was something that N E S, the accrediting. Um, where we get accreditation from for our high schools, created um, as a requirement for high schools. And so they started having to create, what does a student graduating from Littleton High School need to have done, need to have accomplished? What do they need to be able to do when they leave high school? And so even our state, actually, Desi just came out with a vision of a graduate. Um, recently, very recently, within the past month herself, um, at the state level as well. And it's very interesting, going a little bit of how myself, that the state one is interesting to look at in comparison to ours, there's a lot of overlap and similarities. Which I think is an interesting thing, um, and affirming for us of kind of we're looking at it um, in a way that the state is also looking at it broadly. So, um, the vision of a graduate has evolved into a Portrait of a Learner. Because when we take a step back and we say, when we, a student leaves Littleton High School, we want them to have these skills and this set of knowledge, right? That doesn't just happen in the four years of Littleton High School, that actually starts way back in Shaker Lane. And that gets built upon at Russell Street, built upon at Littleton Middle School, and then evolves at the high school level, right? And so for us, it really is a portrait of a learner, all the way from when they enter their first step within Littleton Public Schools, at whatever school that may be, all the way through. And so it's important for us, what we have, have come to realize and find is that our Portrait of a Learner, there is a very clear through line. Because we want to make sure that the students come in and are able to develop and enhance those skills as they grow up through those public schools. Our team, last summer, so the summer of twenty twenty-four, our admin team did a professional development. We brought in a couple of individuals who um, have been well-known in the state with regards to making this evolution from vision of a graduate. To Portrait of a Learner. And so we brought them in, our admin team participated in professional development with them last summer of twenty twenty-four. And then we immediately started working on and enhancing our profession, our Portrait of a Learner within our public schools. Full well knowing that the high school had a leg up because they had already been starting this work due to N E S coming and doing their visit. Um, so all last year, we spent time working on creating our Portrait of a Learner. And it has expanded at different times, at different steps, it goes from whole staff to leadership team, back to whole staff. And so it's, it's an interesting process that we are kind of taking our time with to make sure that we get the bones right, to put something in place that is valuable. And feels worth putting towards our students and so that they actually also then see the value in participating in that. So when they get to the high school and they're doing these presentations about themselves and the skills that they're, they're exemplifying, they feel confident what they're doing. So there are four phases to the implementation of a Portrait of a Learner. And on the next slide, you see what those four phases are. There are the find the truth, define the skills, magnify the moments and measure what matters. Last year, we really focused on find the true, find true north, excuse me, and to find the skills. Um, find true north is what we really, that's kind of centering ourselves in what is learning? When you come to Littleton Public Schools, what does it mean? Who, who's involved? Where does it happen? All of that. And then we spent time defining the skills as well last year and what that meant in each of the competency areas that we identified. This year, we are continuing to deepen our magnifying the moments, finding more moments to magnify. And we're having conversations about making sure that measurement is there. So. We're building the bones and the structure to be able to have this for moving forward. The key to the Portrait of a Learner, I think one of the keys to a successful Portrait of a Learner is to acknowledge that we're building a strong structure, we're building strong bones. But we have to ensure that we understand teaching and learning changes, it allows. And so we have to be able to come back to this and update it as we see fit for moving forward. And so I think that's what we're, we're, we're doing a nice job of right now, is having kind of these broad-based conversations of what does that mean, what does that look like? In practice, and then being able to revisit it as we continue to move forward and make sure it's still in a sense. So in the find true north, our first stage that we worked on last year, on the next slide, you see the result of that work, which is our definition of learning. And so we were able to say, when we talk about learning, who's involved, what is it, where is it, when, why, how does it take place, right? So that is something that we had created last year and we had shared with you all last year. After we did the first step of find true north, we then went into the defining the skills. The defining the skills on the next slide, um, you'll see Brussels Street and Shaker Lanes. And so while all schools have the same six competency areas. And so you see, you will see them on all four of the visuals on the, this slide and the next slide. And John already listed them out for you this evening, right? So all six competency areas, we agreed as a district, those are the ones we're focusing on. And what the schools did last year is staffs came up with the skills that each student needs to have underneath these, these competency areas. When we looked at it as a district, what we realized was that we were all in agreement on those skills. We were just saying them in different ways, which makes perfect sense, because we were saying them at the age-appropriate level for the grade span which they were working. And so you'll see on these defining the skills, each competency area. When I say competency area, I'm saying the effective communicator, critical thinker, mindful learner. These skills are then those bullets um, underneath or next to it. Those are the skills that if you actually compare Shaker Lane to Russell Street, you're gonna see that through line for, for each one of them. And then Russell Street to middle school, there's a through line going there. Middle school to high school, there's a through line, so that our students really are. We're not throwing random different skills with them at different grade levels, right? We're continuing to work and deepen, enhance those skills that they're working on. The next slide, you see the uh, the middle school and the high schools. And so the content of these skills um, is basically finalized. The um, the beautifying of them is still going to be um, a work in progress coming forward, right? The high school has done theirs, uh, like I said, they're a slight step ahead because of certain deadlines they have with N E S. Um, but we will be able to take the others and start to align them with images and have that also look at how can we make that be grade appropriate? For the schools that uh, at their grade spans. So with that being said, from there, what we did was we started magnifying the moments. And so what that means was that we looked at and thought of learning experiences in which our students could demonstrate these skills. That we have identified as being important. So we said, what are the events? What are the, the academic learning experiences or the extracurricular opportunities that our students can take part in at various grade levels? In order to demonstrate their knowledge of these skills. And so what we did on the next slide, you'll see, and thanks to Julie Lord for her creativity, uh, we created a roadmap. And so it actually goes all the way through grade twelve, this slide couldn't, couldn't handle, I couldn't handle it, so I'm just giving you a little taste here. But you see, it is one road, right, that goes along, and on this we see pre-K through grade four. And this is just a very beginning sampling, it is not all of that is marked, this is definitely work in progress. Our goal is to create an example roadway, it is not actually, no two students will have the same roadway. Right? Because no two students may participate in every single same experience, nor experience it the same way. And that's something that we've had conversations about, right, where after Global School Play Day, I may feel like I worked. Uh, and became a strong engaged citizen on that day, I might have that reflection. Whereas a, a um, classmate of mine might feel like they became a critical thinker that day because they had to do a lot of solving, right? And so everyone has varied experiences and varied perspectives and takeaways from potentially the same learning opportunity, right? Which is why everyone's roadmap is going to look slightly different. But we as a district wanted to create something that we could hold up and show as a, as an example of. This is, this, these are the opportunities that you can have, and here's how they can look for you going all the way pre-K to twelve through Littleton Public Schools. The last piece is the measure what matters, and it's that evaluation piece. And I think what's important when it comes to evaluation is that it goes beyond just the numbers and the letters of grades, right? For especially for something like this, the skills that we're talking about, the competency areas that we're talking about. What we really are, are hoping our students are doing is having a lot more um, metacognitive thinking, right? So just taking a step back and reflecting, how did I experience this learning experience? What did I learn from it? Not just content-wise, but skill-wise, right? What was I able to do differently this time that worked out better in the end? And so what we have uh, determined and, and are, are in the process of working towards. Is every school has made I can statements based on the skills they've identified. And then we are working on creating reflective prompts, so prompts or sentence starters. So that students can then say, well, I can speak right, listen in very creative ways, and here's how. And so sometimes when you ask a student, well, how do you know you can do that? And they should say, well, I can do it, right? And so the reflective prompt is something to kind of trigger them to the next step of, well, how, should, like, tell me a little bit more about that, right? And so it's really trying to get them to pause and think about their, go one level deeper into their various areas. It ties into what you noticed about all of the, the first goals, right? Really being that creative, that student voice, that personalization. This, I think what is amazing is that so many times, we'll be in discussion. It happened just this past week in our admin team leading, team meeting, where we were talking about something completely different. And all of a sudden I was like, well, we could tie this to Portrait of a Learner. And so Portrait of a Learner has been really been a, um, a home base for us of kind of, it's, it's been our true north. We've been coming back to it of, oh, it can tie to that in this way. How cool would it be for our students to be able to tie that and think about it in that way? And so while uh, the Portrait of a Learner still continues to be a work in progress. I'm really happy and proud of our team for the very thoughtful, intentional, um, and purposeful way that we are going about it. And so this year, we're going to continue with continuing on the reflective prompts, measuring, how do we evaluate the implementation of this? And, and students really growing in their skills, um, as well as being able to provide more of those magnifying the moments. So being able to come up with more of those examples, so students kind of know what, what we're talking about when we say magnify the moment. And having learning experiences to be able to reflect on.
Couple of items before we get started. When we do these presentations, we make things look pretty easy. This process is not easy. We, we began with the definition of learning, sixteen leaders around the table. Each having input, each wordsmithing multiple times. Then we went back to the schools, leadership team, staff, then came back again. And wordsmithed, and, and finally came to an agreement. And if you can imagine sixteen leaders. Having this document in front of them on Google Docs, all taken apart and putting it back together, that was quite the process in itself. At every stage of this process, we used, we used that, that approach. Even when we, we look at the, the six skills. We had some skill sets presented by the high school, we wanted to preserve them, but only if it was a belief system. With all the people that we collaborated with to, to do that, these, these six different areas. Because these six different areas are gonna define what our students are going to strive for prior to graduation. There, that's gonna be the package. Graduate will have these skill sets. And we're able to live in vibrant boldness. And also, as John threw it out. Be able to showcase the areas that, that they feel that they've excelled in and that they've grown in. So this has been a long process. And, and I'm really proud as a superintendent to, to see how complex this process was and look at the product that you, you have for you. So, you know, it's our job to make it look easy, but behind the scenes, uh, there's been, there's a lot of, a lot of work, a lot of dialogue. Sometimes compromise, come ground, and uh, we're really proud of the product that we, we worked on together to create. Thank you.
John?
Yeah.
Uh, first of all, this is great. I just was curious.
Uh, first of all, this is great. I just was curious, um. I guess pretty much going to say, I like being gay citizen part, I guess we're all, well, it's committed like that piece, but. Um, I noticed that only three of the six have something listed for the I can and there's like a prompt. I think that's still a work in progress, I just want to call it out, but.
Yeah, no, thanks for calling that out. I, I shouldn't specify that that slide is just a screenshot. Of uh, and actually just Brussels Streets. So very, very specific screenshot, just to give you a little like samples. Of what we're, what we're working on in Florence.
Great.
Yeah, yeah. No, thanks for, yeah, talking that out.
Um, I was gonna say, this is an incredible amount of work. I can appreciate that, uh. Uh, appreciate you sharing, Kelly. I, I can just imagine and love this flip from. Vision of a graduate, Portrait of a Learner, and this through line, and we commented on school improvement plans and the, and the through line over. From all the schools. And I was gonna say, I'm so glad that I'm on the school committee and I get to see this level of detail, but like. Do, how do we bring our parents into this? Can we like share this at back to school night? Is there an image of this in schools? If there is, I'm so sorry. Yeah, they've walked by one. But like, I'm just imagining, you know, Shaker Lane Portrait of a Learner, like when you walk into the school, is there a plan for that?
Yeah, to, to do that, right? Like to be able to put that out there and kind of have it everywhere and visible and students really engaging with it. So it becomes a very. Every kind of part of their day, right? To be able to see that in, in their classrooms all the time.
Yeah.
There's really different.
Yeah.
There's just no product, visual product yet, right? And so the, the idea is those, what's on the slide that define the skills.
Yes.
Is, yeah, so is to kind of, now that we have that language and those skills solidified. It's to take that and make it um, an image that is, eh. Age appropriate, right? So there's a lot of words on that.
Yeah.
And not a lot of images. And something for Shaker Lane, it would be helpful to have a few more images on that versus as many words. So if all students at Shaker Lane can look at that and say like, oh, that's what that's referring to, right?
Yeah.
And so making those adaptations now. Before, because we don't want to put anything out until we have that just kind of. Settled across the board. And then the plan is certainly to get that out there um, to not only the students, but also to families.
It's a wonderful thing to be able to come back to, use pieces of it throughout the year, but have that, those touchstones.
Yeah.
It's, yeah.
I just want to express my gratitude for. How beautifully you explained this. I know you put a lot of work into your slide decks and I, I appreciate the context. For understanding where this came from. All of a sudden, a lot of districts were starting to work on Portrait of a Learner. And I was like, what was this rant? Like, what, where is this all coming from? So now I know it came from NIASK, but it's, it's so powerful. I think to your point, Kelly, how it. Really helps a district define their vision and get. Every school on the same path, every grade level on the same path. It really gives us, as school committee members. An entry point for really understanding what's happening at an important level in the district. So I'm. Very grateful for, as always, your very clear. Way of providing context and explaining complicated things. Um, and it's, yeah, you know, you would notice too that I, you know, the, the student centered. Aspect of the first goals and the school improvement plans do seem very aligned with Portrait of a Learner. And I, I, I love this through line, this continuity. I feel like we, we all have some traction. You know, we as school committee members can be part of this too. So it's um. I'm obviously very excited about this. So thank you very much.
Absolutely.
We're all in the same direction.
Yeah. Exactly, exactly.
I mean, we started out years ago when we decided to have focus groups at the middle school and high school. Pushing engagement to agency and student voice. And we all have, but we were trying to figure it out. So I thought, well, this is one way of starting the process and. And then that was, I think, a pivotal point for, for the middle school and high school. And have the opportunity to talk to Russell Street, Shaker Lane, their leadership team. But to listen to our students talk about their experiences, what they valued, what they didn't value. And, and in a dialogue that was a two-way dialogue and, and. Their presentation skills. I mean, they, they were just talking back and forth, but, but they were so. Cogent and, and focused when they were talking. And I walked away from those focus discussions. And going, just with a smile, I think, oh my goodness, like you talk about learning about your students and, and. Their educational journey and the product that's sitting right in front of me was, was an amazing experience. And, and from there, we continued to, to grow in other, other, other directions. And, and then when they looked at the two big goals, you, you did see that content that's been jelling through here. We really use our, a leadership team model that's somewhat unique. When we hire new staff and they come into our leadership team, we blow away. Because my philosophy is when we're in that room, we're colleagues. There's no pecking order. And we talk about things that we're passionate about. And we, we work together to, to, to meld something that, that gives us direction. And it's worked very well. And I'm just really proud of the leadership team. Worked, most of us have worked together for a number of years, but when we bring new members in, uh, they're, they're excited to, to jump on the wagon. Explore with us.
Well, and kudos to you for having leadership team meetings so frequently. It's more, more frequently than other districts I've been involved with. So that, that makes a huge difference that you just have that continuity of um, knowing you're gonna, it's only two weeks, right?
Yes.
Yeah, that's incredible.
And we have uh, online agendas. People can add agenda items. It's very participatory. Every summer, we, we used to. Choose a common book. Now each of us brings something that we're passionate about, sixteen of us, to the table. And we talk about the, the book and why it's important to us. And then at the end, we take a vote and we choose what book out of the sixteen books that have been read, uh, we're, we're gonna focus on for the year. So we, we do some very creative things. And it really, it keeps us together. Uh, it keeps us curious and we spend each other's uh, passion that they've been retaliating. So it's, it's. It's been rewarding for, especially for me as a superintendent, but hopefully for the leaders in the three as well.
Great job. What I, you know, you, you're fine. It's more just a comment. What I love about it is this idea that's kind of started by Jason, which is like. Flip this around and student assessment, create your own rubric. This is the framework, sort of how to be successful at the school that you're at and it gets you ready for the next one. So while you're not going to be personally graded on your Portrait of a Learner. Your mastery of these skills gets you prepared for the next building. And ultimately, what's, what's life like after LPS? Um, so I just, I love it, this sort of um. Opportunity for students to assess where they are, where they might need more help. Um, so that they can be thinking about not just the core academics, but how am I doing, you know, in these six areas?
And I think as we talked about earlier, sometimes the students can be first on themselves, right? Where we can be our own worst critic. And so I think it's a really good opportunity to be able to have them have those thoughts and conversations with others. So that they can also become their own best critic. And I think it's also a life skill that.
Guide, guiding them through that.
Exactly, it's huge. Yeah, exactly. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, that closes the presentation portion of the evening. So this will be our second opportunity for interested citizens. I'm seeing them in the room. We got anyone on Zoom?
One on this quiet night tonight. Um, we're gonna roll through our subcommittee reports, so. We'll start with PMBC, but I just, I'd like to include Shaker Lane with that as well, since that's the big PMBC topic. And then we don't have to do the Shaker Lane separately. So anything PMBC, uh, non-Shaker Lane specific?
Sure, yes. So at the Singer Center, they're working through a fix in the Bachi Ports. Um, they're still trying to determine that thirty-six King, uh, who's in charge of all, he's gonna cover the issues from the summer. Um, and police station, uh, although I believe the water issue has been resolved, there's still a bit of a trap. So we're looking through that. Um, with the windows here, the station. Uh, and then, uh, yeah, that was my last. Uh, and then to skip over to Shaker Lane, um. Uh, I know Kelly worked on this as well, but the cartoon put out a great video series, just want to call that out about the project, uh, really well done. Uh, and then just to bang the drum again, uh, town meeting is October twenty-eighth. Uh, ballot vote is uh, the number first. Um, if you did a mail-in ballot, those are already out in the mail. Look out for those, the town meeting booklet's already out there. Uh, be aware of that. Um. There uh, was a forum on September twenty-ninth, uh, it was, it was really good. Uh, a number of people that are butters ended up attending to make them a strong support. People have feedback. I, I just want to call out, you know. You don't have to just go to the meeting if you, you know, oppose your support. And we just want to hear what you have to say, uh, after that end. Going forward and uh, as Kelly mentioned, the next meeting or the next forum is going to be October eighteenth, four P M. To the middle school. Yes. Little school got there. That's, that's great. Yeah, so that's, that's all I have.
Great. Um, I'll just add on slightly. So I received, maybe everybody did, but my street today, so the uh. The warrant information. So, you know, hot topic for everybody, they've just recently received out. So I, I know that we've been beating the drum. You know, if you're hustled and supported this, we really need all household voters. So I sent out probably. I don't know, twenty text messages, probably like forty recipients, because I put, you know, husband and wife on the text together, like. You got your voter information today. Want to remind her, you know, this is uh, you know, we're, I'm hoping to see both of you there. And I'll be honest with you, like, the excuses are coming in, like, oh, we get danced that night at soccer. So I would just reiterate for all of those that think that, you know, we've talked to people and they're both gonna come. We're gonna need, for everybody that's out there listening, even on replay, you're gonna need to uh, approach your neighbors and friends and really drag them. Both to town meeting, um, where you've got households that have got two, three or, you know, more uh, voting members in that household. So. Super important that uh, you pick up from dance and then come to town meeting when you're able to. Because the vote's probably not going to occur until I'm guessing E thirty, but maybe a little before, maybe a little after, but um. You don't have to be there at seven.
And free childcare and family friendly room in the cafeteria. The center is set up, uh, with the cafeteria. So we're, we're doing everything we can to uh, get our voters out. So to attend town meeting, so. I'd also like to thank Gilfoyle for uh, creating suppliers for us. Uh, if you're, I'm sure you're all in school now. Uh, you've been getting a lot of information in the past two weeks and it's going to continue, you know, right up to October twentieth.
Are those flyers being sent out on your social media feeds or how are they being distributed to school now?
Through school now, they're on our website. I do not have a social media feed anymore. I'm, I'm rid of X. So we're looking at blue sky, but we haven't, we haven't made any decisions yet. We don't, we want to make sure before we jump into social media again. That it's gonna be around for a while. We're not gonna be looking at each other and saying, pull out, do we stay in and. And this summer I pulled out. I just haven't, you know, in terms of the social media post or a school district, it just, it just didn't. Wasn't working. So.
Well, you use school now that, for that.
Yes. And it's, it's linked to our website. So we're getting, we're getting a. A good bang for a buck, so to speak. But, you know, I, I do miss a broader social media site. And, and it's just, I think everybody's struggling right now. So, but I'm glad we have school now. That has, that's been a great uh, addition to innovation within our community. The town has also been wonderful with our list service. They've been sending in everything else as well, so. And uh, yes for Littleton, I can't speak highly enough about Annalise, Rob Rounds and the other members of that group. They're working tirelessly to, to promote this project. And personally, I, I think where we started, when we first started getting numbers in, uh, the seven, I believe nineteen a year. Uh, worst year is, is pretty darn decent compared to some of the projects that are being approved. In other areas. One was just approved. I don't want to mention the name on air, but uh, their initial uh, worst year was uh, four double. What ours is. So. Keeping our fingers crossed, as I said many times as superintendent, I, I think the solution that. That is the only solution from my point of view as the educational leader would be to build a new Shaker Lane school. I think the other alternatives uh, really aren't getting, uh, it's not a good investment. All you're doing is putting money into, into something that you know isn't gonna last. It's gonna cost more money. And you're gonna have to go through a process again to apply for a school. Uh, if that happens in ten years, you've all seen the slide where it uh, goes up significantly in costs, five percent a year minimum. So we're hoping that our residents uh, you know, have, have followed this information so that they. They have good information to use when they make their decisions.
Well, I received my postcard in the mail and just if anyone out there. Did receive a postcard and they have any questions about it, we would love for you to bring it to a meeting and ask us some questions and let us. Have a conversation with you.
Well, the thing I want to say with town meeting too is that, um, you know. We, we transitioned, I don't know when that transition happened, we transitioned to clickers and that's gonna be a process, right? So it's not, you know, there's a kind of this notion out there that town meeting takes forever, right? It's really, I know there's other business that's really this issue. They put this in front of a lot of stuff that it usually goes behind. This is gonna be accessible to people. It should be good. And there's also busing for some of the seniors as well, um. Really trying to make this tangible and easier to get to, uh, people.
Um, to follow up on that, so I heard Karen Morrison, Chair of the Select Board. She's offered a wonderful one oh four six go, um. She like podcast series and she did, today's topic was what to expect at your first town meeting. So for those that have never come to town meeting and are like, what am I walking into? It, it will be um, a very different experience for you if you've never been to town meeting before, but. Having the clickers will be um, what, what is it? Thirty seconds? So in thirty-one seconds, we'll know what the vote is and we won't have to raise hands or shout. There, there won't be a, a motion for ballot and all that stuff. Mayhem. So clickers solved a huge problem.
And again, we need two thirds vote at town meeting. So it's not just, all right, let's get over the line. It's two thirds. We really need to be able to show up.
Yeah, if anybody has never been to town meeting, it's a New England tradition. It's kind of unique to our region and it's, it's very uh. Special and wonderful. So. Our participatory democracy.
It is participatory.
Yes.
I see. As raw as it gets.
That's right. It is.
Well, well, civil the entire time.
Yes.
Um, also at that?
Yes, thank you.
Great. Uh, Budget Subcommittee, um, I think we have given the update last time because we had a meeting, started to go through it. Nothing else additional. So really no new report in the Budget Subcommittee, other than we've begun our work. Uh, Policy Subcommittee?
We met this afternoon and so we couldn't post our tonight's meeting, but at the next meeting, you will have eleven policies from first.
And we, we did have made some changes, you know, it's fixing typos, but we have. We're working really hard to tighten it up and make sure all the language is clean.
So I have a task of the Policy Subcommittee, which I, one, you might be aware of, two, maybe not. The first one was, just because I, I, I joke and I call it this school committee chair, uh, support group. But what it actually is, is a bunch of districts that get together and we talk about uh, what's bubbling up in the district. So it's, it's great. It's a lot of fun, actually. Um, the first one was, um. And, you know, sent it to me. So we do have a policy around service and therapy docs. So I think we're gonna review that one.
We are because there's been an update to the M A S C policy. And so we didn't get to it this afternoon, but in our next meeting, we have that as the policy.
Great. That was, that was a topic of conversation at the. Yes. So, you know, I'm glad to hear we have a policy for what, I mean, I've looked at them, but for whatever reason, that one didn't stand out. It's been. And districts are experiencing. Um, like a slight problem if they don't get out of front of it, right?
Okay.
Um. And then the other one, which came up in the Budget Subcommittee meeting was, uh, just if we have a formal policy around. Um, corporate uh, sponsorship and uh, how that might translate to advertisements on school property.
Oh.
Um, so we could just get that on the agenda, just to review that.
Yeah, we did. Yeah, that was, that was, we were talking about like is in the company's logo.
Mm-hmm.
So we had the Jetfield donation tonight, which was all privately raised, but um. The youth basketball organization in town is thinking about making a donation. For uh, a replacement on the middle school scoreboard. And the easiest way to raise capital for that would be to have a sponsor, a corporate sponsor. Local business and they just wanted to make sure that if they were, if they were promising uh, some sort. And they just wanted to make sure that if they were, if they were promising uh some sort of opportunity for their name to be visible, that that would be allowed.
Yeah, okay, we can add that to our list.
Great. Thanks so much. Uh some districts do, some districts don't, so we just have to re, you know, revisit ours and come up with one. Um any other C P A C that you have sometimes? Yes.
Glad you're doing it now.
Please.
Okay, so, yeah, I have a report from C P A C, so that's the, for those of you who don't know that acronym, it's hope I get this right, Special Education Parent Advisory Committee. Counsel, counsel. Anyway, so they had their first meeting September thirtieth, so um Lynn Snow gave an update about um what's happening in the district. Um they're very excited about the upcoming meeting on October twenty second, which will be at seven o'clock at central office, which is now at thirty six King Street. Um so they're going to have a professional coach, former educator and fellow Littleton mom, Stephanie Russo, come to speak about self compassion and how parents can build resilience and find their footing on those hard days. And um she's gonna share some simple, easy to implement tools that parents can start using right away to feel more confident and supported. And I think that's such an important meeting to attend for anyone who has a a child um with special needs, because it's it's a hard road at home for families. And if you can get some tools for self-care, um and and also that just being in a community of of people who are going through similar things, it's, it's so important. So that, again, that's October twenty second at seven o'clock at central office.
Excellent, thanks so much. Any other subcommittee reports before I ask for motion to adjourn? Here we go. Uh last promotion to adjourn. Motion made by Sean. Second in my penal, all who's in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Have adjourned, thank you.